Okay, let's call this meeting of the Planning Commission Wednesday, April 12, 2023 at 7:00 PM to order. And start out with a roll call.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake and Shannon.
Jim Johnson, Mid Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Powers, Staff Planner.
Yes, McCrady Planning.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, on favor? Aye opposed. Minutes from previous meeting, March 22, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, on favor? Aye opposed. Phew, that was quick. Public comment, anyone wishing to speak now, or you could wait till the agenda item also, whatever you'd rather. Not taught now, you can come up, or wait. Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to 6A, new business. Special use permit public hearing number 041223-1, proposed short-term rental unit on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. Parcel tax ID is 520837004450. Subject property is described as Trobridge Park, subdivision number eight, south half of Lot 830. Property address is 2572 West Fair Avenue in Marquette. The applicant is Dan Flanagan, 2572 West Fair Avenue in Marquette. Eric or Jason?
Yep, so as Chairman Johnson said, we have received an application for a short-term rental use at 2572 West Fair Avenue. As you can see on your screen now, you'll notice that there's two vacant lots on either side of the subject parcel. It is located in the urban residential zone district and surrounded on all four sides by urban residential zone properties. Neighbors within 300 feet of the subject property have been notified. Staff has not received any comments for or against, more neutral regarding the proposal. Fees have been paid and the applicant was made aware of the property tax implications should he pursue renting the property as he proposes. I would also like to note that the applicant has stated in their narrative, which is in your packet, that his plan would be to live in the house full-time as he does now. And he is planning on retiring soon, and so then this would allow him to rent the house out while he is not staying there, so. Unless the Planning Commission has any questions, that's all I have. And otherwise, I invite the applicant, Mr. Flanagan, up to speak if he has anything to say.
I don't really, if there's no concerns, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Flanagan right now before we open the public Okay. Then we will open the public hearing at 7:04. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward to speak, so we will close the public hearing at 7:05. And open up to anybody here. Comments, questions, motions?
Make a motion to approve the special use permit for short-term rental, the property described in Agenda Item 6A.
I'll second.
This is gonna be that easy?
You guys answered, yeah, you guys asked a lot of questions when we scheduled a public hearing, so I think that a lot of those initial questions were answered.
I guess I just think it's a good location for a short-term rental, you know, it's kinda private and you have parking set up and no one's been talking against it. You didn't have any written comments at all, is that right?
No, we had a couple of phone calls, a couple neighbors that had asked some questions, but they were not against it at all, they just wanted to know some of the particulars, people per night that would be allowed to stay. And we reassured them that there would be no fireworks and bonfires, rabbit dogs.
I won't be far, so I'll be keeping an eye on it. I don't plan on letting more than six people, it's a three-bedroom, large bedrooms, it's a big house. If there is any problem with noise or anything like that, which I plan on having written instructions and suggestions and things for, but I know some people actually do put sound monitor devices, but I don't think that's gonna be necessary, so.
I know I didn't have any issues with it whatsoever, so.
Straightforward.
Yeah. Alright, let's do the roll call. Steve Hickenin.
Yes.
Danny Ferraro.
Yes.
Bethany Cody.
Yes.
Linda Winslow.
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Pass unanimously.
We will all vote you later this week as far as those last few steps, so.
Good, very good, appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Flanagan.
Thank you.
You win the prize for the quickest one we've ever done.
Awesome. Is that the end of your vote? We may beat your record tonight.
Well, thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, 6B, public hearing 041223-2, zoning map amendment, proposed rezoning of the subject parcel at 170 County Road 492. Parcel tax ID is 520802002400. It's in the current general business district and want to move it to the development district in order to facilitate a proposed residential development on the property. The applicant is Marquette Chartered Township, 1,000 Commerce Drive in Marquette. Jason or Eric?
Yes, as you know, we've been entertaining and in discussion with Renovare Development LLC for a proposed planned unit development involving a variety of mixed-use housing. As such, the property that we have been marketing for some time is currently zoned general business, and while multifamily residential is allowed in the general business zoning district, some of the other land uses are not, for instance duplex and single family. So, in an effort to do what we can to help facilitate the project and to make the property more marketable, we are proposing to rezone that property to the development district, which does allow those specific land uses. Might be kinda tough to see here, but the star is on the parcel that we were just looking at. There's the shape, and it's in the general business district, that orange color is adjacent and abutting to other development district zoning in the area, and so we've been talking about this for a few weeks now, and have scheduled a public hearing. Neighbors within 300 feet have been notified, we didn't pay any fees per se, but we did receive one call from the landowner of Goodwill, who is based out of California, and she left me a message asking whether or not this would affect her property in a negative way value-wise, and I called her back and left a voicemail indicating that I thought it would improve her property values and add more customers to her store potentially, and I did not receive a follow-up call, so I'm assuming that her questions were answered. So that was the only correspondence that I received from any of the property owners that were notified. So again, this would allow for the proposed land uses that are partnership with, our private-public partnership with Renovare Development LLC is proposing to construct. And as you know, for our previous meeting this evening with the, or the workshop with the township board, they have submitted, offered a purchase. We have revamped that based on some legal opinions and some desires of the township board to limit the amount of time that they would have to execute the project, and that is back with Renovare Development LLC, and they have passed it on to their attorney. So I suspect that we'll hear something back soon and that they will be submitting a planned unit development some point later in the summer.
I was reading some material on this project, the road that's on the north side of that, what is that road?
It's a service road that the township put in as part of, or in an effect to aid in access management. So, that particular development has a lot of traffic in it, and at certain times, it's really difficult to get back out to the highway to make a turn because you're waiting on traffic coming westbound.
Yeah.
And so the township, several years ago, owning that property, put in that gravel rear access driveway to try to alleviate some of the congestion that was at that.
Were easements granted to the property owners to the north?
No.
No, so it's just a road by provision right now.
Correct, yep, and then at some point, we'll need to decide whether or not, based on the proposal from Renovare Development, whether that should remain or we could agree to give it up.
Yeah, because I used that, I used that road not too long ago, within the last couple of months, and it's horrible.
Well, yeah, it's gravel-based, and it's that time of year where things are kinda sloppy. I do use it on occasion as well, and it's kind of a sneaky little thing for people that are there, that know it's there, and allows them to get out.
Are the business owners to the north, are they the ones that are maintaining it?
No, the township maintains it.
They open it up for them, the whole bit?
Uh, we plow it and we grade it when we can.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, alright.
Is that the, is that the access road that comes off of 492 behind Goodwill?
Yes.
Okay. What's, as you go past 492 and you pass the Schwemwood Park sign, right past that, there's another little road that has like a yellow iron gate, what's that road? Is that township property?
That's private.
No, that's private on the south side of the Iron Road Heritage Trail.
Okay, so it doesn't, I see.
Jason, why would it, we need to rezonate if they're gonna apply for a PUD?
Well, the PUD still has to have land uses that are allowable within the residential zoning districts, so, yeah, I think it's a smart move. And I don't think it detracts, let's say the deal with Renovare doesn't come to fruition, I don't think it makes the property any less marketable for us, in fact, I think it makes it more marketable, because many of the land uses that are available in the general business district or along the corridor are available in that, in that district, it just says that if it's adjacent to residential or abutting residential land use, that you have a public hearing, so the neighbors will be notified. In this case, there's no abutting residential land uses, so, yeah, it's just based on the land uses themselves, just to try to cut through some of the red tape and allow the development to happen without there being any additional complexities. So if the township planning commission was to approve this, this would go to the county planning commission for their review and comment, it would go to our legal, our legal counsel for review and comment, and then once that review period is concluded, it'll go to the township board for their consideration as the governmental body. Township board is the only board that could change the ordinance or the map, zoning map.
Development district has a lower number than general business, right? Or is it reverse?
Lower number?
Intensity use?
Um, yeah, yeah, land use intensities, but again, a lot of those land uses, like you could still have, I think, you know, if you look in the zoning ordinance, there's a myriad of land uses that are available as being permitted in general business that would be permitted in the development district. The difference between the development district is that it's a buffer between the residential and the commercial district, so less intense land uses, but if there's no residents around there, then it becomes a moot point. So it's just a bit of housekeeping, in my opinion.
So you don't consider the residential development, that it just kinda nicks the southeast corner of that to be adjacent?
It wouldn't be abutting, no. Yeah, the operative word in the ordinance is abutting.
Is it ruled right-of-way, is that what prevents it from being abutting? I mean theoretically, they could touch at a corner and that's not close enough. Looks like there might be a little bit there.
No, in my opinion, it doesn't, abut. And just for reference, she was one of the people that were notified within the 300.
Yeah, no, no, I'm talking, I'm talking to, further to the south, there's that.
Lost Creek?
Referring to Lost Creek.
Yes.
Um, that's considered a commercial use, actually, or a quasi-commercial use.
As opposed to residential?
Yes.
Any more questions for the applicant?
Let me look this application over.
Alright, once you're done, we'll open the public hearing at 7:17. Anyone wishing to speak may do so now.
Yeah, my name is Matt Orr, I do represent Caesar Properties, which is Julie Caesar. I do support forms, so she requested that I come here tonight. And the store that they actually own is the Michaels and Dollar Store, not the Goodwill Store. And she does have a great concern about the property value, whether having residential behind her location directly and not having commercial development within that area, that will affect her value for the property.
You believe it will?
Yeah, she does.
She does?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, she never, first of all, she said she was with Goodwill, based on the voicemail that I have, and then secondly.
Might have been, it might have been somebody who owns the Goodwill store then.
Oh, okay. So you're representing another entity?
Yeah, I'm talking Caesar Property.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't contacted by them.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
One more time on your name, please.
Oh, Matt Orr.
Matt Orr, O-R-R?
Yeah. And it's Julie Caesar who owns the property.
Okay. Did I close it, close the public hearing at 7:17? Okay. Alright.
I have a question. I have a question for the supervisor. Did either Michaels or Dollar General file for tax regen?
As far as I know, everybody in the township did, all of the businesses, but I don't wanna say for sure. Because some of the, I have a list of whom that's gone, but I don't know the corporate names, so you can't tell.
So Caesar Properties.
Like if it was Caesar Properties, you know how we can build that.
We could look it up, I'm just curious.
Anything more good? Ready for motion?
Motion to approve the proposed rezoning of the subject parcel at 170 County Road 492 as described in Item 6B.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
So this is to, you're approving the concept, again, this goes to the county planning commission for their comment, and then to the township board prior to there being any formal action on it. So if you'd like to have follow-up conversations with us, there's other opportunities to speak on behalf of your viewpoint.
Okay. Now, do the roll call again, Steve Hickenin.
Yes.
Danny Ferraro.
Yes.
Bethany Cody.
Yes.
Linda Winslow.
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Okay, motion's passed, good luck applicant. Alright, 6C, we'll move on to special use permit public hearing requests for a proposed short-term rental unit to be located at 4109 County Road 550 in Marquette, within the Zone Scenic Residential District. The applicant is Eric Corinon in Cathy Church, 708 Chippewa Square, Suite 2 in Marquette.
Thank you. Ms. Corinon and Ms. Church are here at our request, just to make sure if there are any questions that you might have, that those get answered. So this property is way up in the northern part of the township on County Road 550, just north of the Little Garlic River. This part of the property was rezoned, Scenic Residential, as part of a rezoning process that we went through a while back, so although the property is less than the five-acre minimum, it is a legal non-conforming parcel, and they have a survey here denoting the property that they've acquired, and they have a little cabin there that they would like to rent out. Your packet also featured copies of their well-inseptic permit, and we are requesting a public hearing for May 10th on this particular special use permit request. They've also provided a narrative for you to consider along with your application. Oh, I've also included in the packet a copy of their current Marquette city property so that you could see, you know, how they operate their, their current short-term rental.
That's the latest county update.
And they are here to answer any questions that you may have of them based on their application. We found it to be complete, their fees have been paid. While accounts, it's a complete application.
No issues with water or sewer on this one?
No, that's why I had them, actually, I asked Cathy after her submitted it, include the water, well-inseptic permits, to demonstrate that that was adequate and up to snuff with
Well, is on your property?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct. Good question.
What, what use is the property, what, what use is the property being made of now?
It was a residential property, we purchased it with the people who had lived there.
Okay.
So it's city-owned right now.
And you're, are you the first residential property north of the bridge of the Little Garlic?
No, second.
Second?
Everybody else is good with it, Jase?
Yeah, no, we, we recommend scheduling the public hearing for Wednesday, May 10th at 7:00 PM. We'll get notifications out, we'll get the ad in the newspaper.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a question, so I assume you bought, is it, is it investment property?
Correct.
You're, you're taking a home state tax exemption on it?
No.
Okay. I'm just asking, because you would lose that in the short-term rental.
Right.
How big is the, the land that you own there?
Uh, it's, I believe it's about one and three-quarters acre.
Is there a shared drive on that? I, I, you don't have a property overlay on that, do you, Jason?
I'm sorry?
There's no property overlay on this map, is there?
No, it looks like there's, I don't know what, an old right-of-way in there.
Oh, right, or utility easement?
Or maybe utility easement, but if you look on the aerial, it's, it's not indicative of what's there now.
Yeah, I can see that, okay.
Low, low-density residential, sure. Have you had any conversations with your neighbors preemptively?
Uh, I actually know the people who live closest, and when she saw, I was over, I actually used to live in that property 20 years ago, and it's the same neighborhood, so she came over when she saw we were there, and I told her what we were gonna do, and she didn't seem to have any concerns.
Is this Cara, is that your business, or is that a business that rents the website or something?
Cara is my first name.
Oh, oh, I see, is, when I, I see, I, when I looked at these pretty pictures of your home there, it says entire home posted by Cara.
Oh, yeah.
I thought maybe it was a rental agency or something.
No, no, it's Cara.
So, so my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you sell the property, the short-term rental license stays with the property?
Stays with the property? I don't know.
The use does, but you would still have to re-acquire a business license.
But that doesn't mean it's limited to the short-term rental use, right?
Right.
That could be vacated, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't go with you if you go somewhere else?
No.
Alright, right, alright, just so, people understand that sometimes? Like other licenses, they think they're going to the person and not the property?
No, we understand that.
You knew that? So how long have you been doing short-term rentals?
Uh, we started our one in Marquette just this last, last year.
Okay, so you're just getting into some experiences?
Yeah, yeah, we've been very busy over there, learning a lot.
And cleaning a lot.
Cleaning, good.
I think they're, I think they're very busy in our community's short-term rentals.
Well, open for motion if anyone wants to make one.
I'll make one, that we, I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing set for May 10th for a special use permit for Item 6C.
Second.
Bethany, second.
I got it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
See you on the tablet, ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
6D, special use permit public hearing requests for a proposed short-term rental Um, six D, special use permit, public hearing request. Proposed group daycare home land use to be located on a property located within the rural residential zoning district. Parcel tax I D number is five two zero eight zero two one zero two four five five. Applicant is Lisa Dawn Stockwell, three twenty-five Brookton Road in Marquette. Jason or Eric?
Yep, so staff has received a special land use application to conduct a group daycare home land use, uh, at three two five Brookton. Uh, so this will be same process as a short-term rental as far as, uh, our actions here. I would like to note kind of the difference or how daycare homes are defined. Um, per our ordinance, group daycare homes are defined as private homes in which seven, but not more than twelve minor children are received for care and supervision for periods less than twenty-four hours a day, unattended by their parent or legal guardian. So this is drop them off in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon.
Children, minor children?
Correct, yep.
Not adults?
Nope.
Okay.
Um, and this is in contrast to a family daycare home, uh, which are defined at the same, with children cared being at least one, but not more than seven. So, uh, family daycare homes, one to seven, and then group daycare, daycare homes as proposed here would be from seven to twelve. It should be noted that the applicant who is here tonight, Ms. Stockwell, has been working with Marissa. Uh, Marissa has, you may be able to clarify once I'm kind of done with my report here, but they've requested that you, uh, apply for this use, um, as they are, have made it, made her aware that they will, are at risk of losing employees, uh, if they don't find childcare for their, these employees. So it's a high need in the community, um, that this would be fulfilling.
Remind us of what the acronym stands for again, Marissa?
Marissa is the Marquette Elder Regional Education Service.
Agency.
Agency, there you go. So, um, unless you have any questions with me, uh, staff would recommend that a public hearing be scheduled for May tenth at seven P M. Um, and as I stated, the applicant is here to answer any specific questions.
So do you intend to have twelve children?
Um, the
Can you come up to the mic, please?
Sure.
Just state your name. Address.
I am Lisa Dawn Stockwell and new resident here in Marquette County. Um, the, the law states that a group home can have seven to twelve children, or up to twelve children. Do you know that Marquette and Marquette County are listed as, they call it the daycare desert? It means for every one space you have available in daycare, there are three children who need that space. Because you are a daycare desert, the state has actually changed twelve, the number twelve to fourteen. However, you have to have two years' experience before you can get to the fourteen and I'll be brand new. So mine will only be twelve, um, at least the first two years. Also, the problem is insurance will not insure fourteen, they'll only insure twelve. So right now, there's an argument between insurances and the state of Michigan on making that happen. Uh, so my intent is to, for my husband and I, uh, we live on the first floor. The daycare is the second floor, or the, the basement floor. It's a five thousand square foot house. It's only the two of us who are retired. And so it, it is, I, I could talk up here for a half hour about the story and how we got where we are today, and it's interesting. My coming to Marquette and trying to find housing and trying to find a place for a daycare and my daughter is having twins and that's why I needed, I needed to do daycare for her. So you tell me what you want to know, because I won't stay here for a half hour and talk to you.
So you're a retired, you're a retired teacher?
Fourth grade teacher from Wyoming Public Schools, just south of Grand Rapids. My daughter found out on March thirtieth that she called, she said, Mom, I'm having twins. We have no twins in our whole family. Like, I can't buy one daycare space, let alone two. There's a two to three year waiting list right now in Marquette. What do I do? And I have until April first to take an early buyout and retire. I have my years in. So I took a, I, I mean, I only took two minutes, not two days to decide, right? Like, okay, I'm there. So I retired as a teacher.
Who, who will be helping you, uh, care for these children?
Um, my husband will be in the home and he has, he got his T V test this week and he has to get his colon check and everything done. Um, and he will be mainly manning the kitchen and then I will hire one other staff person. So there'll be two of us, but my husband will be legally able to help. So if somebody has an appointment or somebody gets sick or somebody, he could step in that role.
And did Marissa approach you? How, how did you make that connection with Marissa?
Um, my daughter got a job this school year for Marissa. And, um, my daughter had called me and said, Mom, please do daycare. And I came here and I started working at a daycare center. Um, and decided it would be better to have it in-home daycare for our twins. One has some special medical things going on.
So has Marissa, uh, uh, given you certain specifications and have invented you and so forth?
Well, they approached me first to say, hey, can we hire you and we can offer insurance and we can, because we want a daycare and here are two classrooms you can do it in. And I said, no way, because the repair work you'd have to do in those classrooms to make them daycare appropriate is so high. Instead, let's consider a home daycare. Um, our twins will be with less children, which is the goal. Um, so less sickness. And, um, they said, can we have your twelve spots? And I said, okay, they, I mean, they have babies being born and they have four employees who are quitting between, um, having babies from January to August. And they said, we're losing employees over this. Um, and so we juggled back and forth um, and came to some agreements that I will take Marissa. I will only be open from August seventh-ish to, uh, June seventh-ish. I'm gonna go with the, the school calendar. I'll take one week off at Thanksgiving, one at Christmas, one at spring break. So I will kind of run that calendar that, because if I'm close, they don't have to pay for daycare on those weeks and that'll help their employees.
So in the summer, you're not gonna have a daycare center there?
I'm not.
Just be your home again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and, um, we could not find a home to buy and then another piece of property to rent for a daycare and, uh, I mean, we've really struggled moving up here, uh, with those things. And so, um, that's where we came to this conclusion. We don't need a five thousand square foot house, but then we have one payment and we can do both things in this. It's, it's just well-laid out, the houses.
Did you buy or, it's on your letter, it said you're renting?
We are renting. Somebody from California bought the house. They were supposed to move in in January of last year. And they got called back to the office and they have to work in their offices now and they can't move to Marquette. And they weren't sure what to do with the house. And it's a teacher in California and you know how this goes. I put on Facebook, Marquette, we need a property like, does anybody have anything for sale? Does anybody, because we couldn't find a place. And I got a call from this lady in California and said, okay, I'll tell you what I have. I have this property.
And are you satisfied that the lease agreement that you have with this person in California will be long enough so that this business with Marissa will, you know, work out at least over a period of more than one year?
Um, I have to agree to two years. I have, um, contacted the state and I've applied for grants. And I grant money because I don't have a playground. I don't have a, so there are certain things the state will give grants for and I have to agree to two years.
So is your leasing of this house for over two years?
We have it for the next two years. So it, it's a three-year lease. We've already been there almost one year. And it'll, it is through August of, what would that be, twenty-five then? And I have her signature on approval of license and insured daycare, which I plan to be.
So does, does the state require outdoor play areas for these children? And the homeowner has no issues with you putting something like that in?
No, what happened is our well went dry this fall and so they put in city water. So we have a space that they had to clear. So we plan to use that cleared space. Um, Brian Lancore is the original, um, builder of the home and he lives next door and he's the landlord. And so he is helping with all those, he knows a lot, all the building things that will happen.
What are the ages of the children that you'll be taking care of again, please?
I'm gonna say zero to four. Um, Marissa, or your county recently got monies from the state because of COVID. We, we are finding that children are coming to kindergarten not ready and they are behind in language because they didn't have the experiences of going places like other children have. So instead of, you know, kindergarten starts at age five, but you have a pre, free preschool, uh, the, starting at four and they're screening for children and trying to get them in, um, a year early so they have that year to work on their speech and language. And so I probably, once they turn four, they're gonna wanna go to that free program run by the state. So I'll probably be zero to four.
Are you required to have special insurance, uh, for this?
Yep, and I'm working through MIMIC insurance. I was a teacher, so I kind of have always had MIMIC and they are doing all my quotes for me.
Okay, thank you.
You have two entrances to your property too, right? Off of Tower Road and then off of Brookton?
Yes.
Will they be using both entrances?
Well, we found out this year that yes, they will, because sometimes Tower Road gets really muddy and it's hard to use. So, and yet our driveway is so steep, some days you can't drive up our driveway to get to our house. So we just kind of put a text out in, in the morning. I'll tell my daughter, hey, because right now I, I'm babysitting for the twins right now. Until this is, I can get licensed. And so I'll text, okay, take the back way or take the front way or, yeah.
I've seen both entrances. It's
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
We do have, um, with the name, we have the late doors on one side, we have their daughter on the other. And the driveway is a circle driveway around our house, so all three of us share the driveways, so we can go up through their driveways also.
Eric, I'm assuming this wouldn't stay with the house if she stopped doing this with the property?
As far as the special use permit zoning approval, that would stay with the house. As far as the state license, I can't speak for that. Um, but I assume down the line, when you're out of the house and who knows? I doubt that the next occupant would utilize the special use permit approval for a group daycare.
If they did, if they wanted.
And if I moved, I have to get a new license. It's per
The state is?
Yes, it's per address. And it's for this address only, my license.
And as part of that state licensing process, is there, uh, fire safety inspection of any sort?
Oh, you can believe all the inspections. Yes, there are. Yep.
I, I assumed. I just wanted to state it for the record, so.
Yes, yes.
Well, I note something that's definitely needed in this area, so let's hope this goes through all the way and, yeah.
This also be for May tenth?
This one, yeah, correct.
Would you like a copy of my lease agreement, my two-year lease agreement or any, okay, because I can provide that.
You have to ask the
We can include it in the public hearing packet.
Okay. I can get that to you.
I can make a motion that we, um, schedule a, a public hearing for the proposed daycare home. Item six D on May tenth. And I'll just support that daycare. It's difficult to come by in this community. Yeah. And the waiting lists are years long.
Second to motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
We'll see you again.
May tenth.
In a few weeks.
Thanks.
No one finished business right now, Jase?
That's correct.
Any correspondence?
Yes, uh, well, of course, we met earlier, so I was able to tell you that the, um, both eight A and eight B, uh, basically the trust fund grant application's been submitted and we'll await, uh, response from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund on that. And we also have received, uh, the preliminary P U D for the Forestville or the Longyear Realty Corporation's proposed, uh, residential development. So that is in process and, uh, in following the ordinance, uh, that has been sent out to their respective area review agencies for their review and comment. So once that's, uh, once those come back, that'll all be presented to you, um, in determination of a public hearing.
Can I ask you, is it same density?
Yes.
And since they submitted this now, does the, uh, timer start on this? Like they have so many
Right, so the agencies have fifteen business days to respond, uh, to reviewing the plan. And then, um, staff compiles those comments and sends them back to Longyear and then they have fifteen days to make any adjustments that they desire to make based on the comments. And then it'll come to the planning commission for your consideration of scheduling a public hearing. So all of those comments will then be brought to you, to you.
So when you say it'll be brought to the planning commission for purposes of scheduling a public hearing, so in other words, it'll be just included as an agenda item, uh, in the packet? We won't see it before then?
I mean, I could forward you a copy of the proposal, but really subjectively, uh, or I shouldn't say materially, hasn't changed. So right now in the P U D process, we're at section thirteen oh five of the ordinance. And I'll read you this, uh, paragraph here. Upon receipt of such completed applications, plans and supporting documents, the zoning administrator shall forward such to the above agencies. During this review by these agencies, the zoning administrator should also complete a review of the P U D proposed for compliance with the zoning ordinance and other applicable ordinances, which we are in the process of doing. Once all of the comments from the above agencies have been received by the zoning administrator or fifteen business days, whichever comes sooner, the zoning administrator shall forward all the comments as well as his or her own comments to the applicant. The applicant shall revise the plan and documents per these comments and submit fifteen complete sets of the revised plan, at least fifteen business days ahead of the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Then the zoning administrator shall forward the P U D plan, applications review and all of the other documents from the other agencies to the planning commission at their next regular meeting. So that's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry. I'll go ahead.
No, no.
When we get the set of plans, can we get plans that I can read? I mean, you know, ledger size is just, I, you know, I can't make heads nor tails out of it and I got pretty good eyes.
Sure, we can do that.
A couple, a couple full sets of plans would be really nice to take.
Well, it says fifteen sets, so it should be enough to go around.
Well, it says full size or A size or C's, it's just a sets. They could give us fifteen sets right here, this size.
Right.
Yeah, what they gave us before, it was hard to...
Yeah. You got it?
Okay.
Did you say when you think, or when you're thinking about contemplating?
Couple months.
Thirty days at least?
Couple months.
That way? So June, July?
No, no, no.
No, no, no?
We'll have, it's, it's April twelfth.
Correct.
I suspect you'll see the preliminary PUD at the May tenth meeting. And then if you wanted to schedule a public hearing, it would probably be in the first week in June, because remember, we only have two weeks between our meetings. So then you would, you would have to, in order to get the notice in the mining journal, et cetera, you would need to have some additional time.
So we have two things already scheduled for May tenth, so we're gonna have, we'll add that on on May tenth, too. Is that gonna be like a lot?
A lot?
Is that gonna be a lot?
No.
No, okay. All right, I'm just checking.
So we have two, we have two public hearings and others tonight, too?
You saw how quick we were tonight?
I did. I've also seen how not quick we've been.
All depends what's here.
So it's just a question, if there's an objection on the part of, theoretically, it is, of any one planning commissioner to the proposed PUD plan, is it appropriate for the, that particular planning commissioner to deny the request for a public hearing on the basis that the PUD application doesn't satisfy section thirteen of our code?
Yeah, I mean, you have that right as a planning commissioner. Okay, yep.
I guess what I'm confused about, I was gonna bring it up at the joint meeting, but we ran out of time, is to okay this PUD before there's any kind of a road setup in place, you know, that, that they're working on right now with the entrance and exits. And I don't see how we could pass it unless there's something set up for that. Do you agree?
Uh, it's something that will have to be contemplated, yes, and Longyear's well aware of it.
In fact, if, if it comes up and there's no agreement with the road committee, I, I don't see any reason...
Well, the road commission, the previous email apparently had stated that they could allow up to one hundred units to be developed without any adjustment to the current intersection.
One hundred?
One hundred.
One hundred parcels?
Now, their first several phases are only fifteen, twenty units at a time by year, so.
And how many total, one hundred and eighty, two hundred and forty?
Two hundred and forty.
Yes.
Two hundred and forty.
Is there a, is there a mandated time in our procedures, our ordinance and so forth?
For them, there is.
For them, there is, but is there, well, maybe I'm, maybe you're addressing my question. Let me just put it this way. So after you, you review it, and you send it to the county and so on and so forth, and it comes back to you, then are we obligated to schedule a, uh, an agenda item to approve a public hearing? Or is there a time limit that we're, we're required? Because as, as Linda says, maybe, and Jim pointed out, the road issue isn't even resolved. Why do it on May tenth? Why not push it into, into June?
So we're not gonna consider that at all until they, until Longyear gets the comments from anybody that looks at the set of plans, that is required to look at them. Then we send it back to Longyear and say, these are the concerns or considerations. Then Longyear has X amount of time to send it back. Then we get it, then we look at it, then we schedule a public hearing?
Uh, based on our zoning language, yes. So if you are interested in reading your zoning ordinance a little in more detail, you'd be looking at section thirteen oh five, sub B, planning commission public hearing and review of preliminary PUD. The zoning administrator shall publish and send out notices in the same manner as prescribed for special land use, et cetera, except the zoning administrator sets the public hearing date and not the planning commission. Following public notices, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing on the preliminary PUD for the purpose of receiving comments. Following the public hearing, the planning commission shall review the preliminary PUD for conformance with the standards set in thirteen oh seven, and make its findings according to those standards, and shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the preliminary PUD.
At the public hearing meeting?
Correct.
It has to be done then?
Correct. So basically, what the ordinance is indicating is that the planning commission should review all of the agency comments, all of the neighbor comments that would come within the public notification, and then you would also review it and decide whether to approve, deny, or approve with conditions.
Well, but looking at thirteen oh five B one, you're the one that sets the public hearing, you're the one that sets a public hearing date.
Right.
So...
Yeah, it's gonna be within a, you know, a couple-week period. I'm not gonna, uh, push it out three or four months when it's not needed.
But you have to have everything back before you can...
Exactly, right, yeah. There is protocol previous to this.
Right, but what I'm saying here, would address Linda's point, partially Jim's point, I, I got the impression you were gonna set this for a, our, uh, motion to set a public hearing, you're gonna set that as an agenda item on the May tenth meeting. But why, why not just delay it until June? Or until the next meet, May tenth, seventeen, twenty-fifth, I guess the twenty-fifth would be meeting? Why not do it towards the end of the month rather than May tenth? Seems like a little short period of time. I have, you know, it just seems like this project is, is rolling down a hill at us, and we're, I'd like to have a little more time. I mean, is there any need to set, to set an agenda item on May tenth to, to set a public hearing?
No, I would probably let you know on May tenth when I'm setting the public hearing for.
That's what I want.
Yes, that was what I was gonna do. Provided...
All the stuff is back, right?
Well, no, but we have to vote on whether, on when...
No, I set it.
We don't vote on it.
I set the public hearing, not the planning commission. It's a little bit different.
Oh, okay.
But I'm not gonna do that with, like, I'll be knowing about it, right?
I see. So it's different than what we just did tonight, setting a date for a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, that's where I'm confused.
So can we get the comments a week before we have the public hearing?
You'll get all the comments on May tenth, if they're back. Well, they will be, because the fifteen days, we're under, we're already five days through it.
But aren't we waiting for Longyear's response, too, for, for that meeting?
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know that they're gonna change much, is what I'm saying.
But we'll get them before that, we'll get them before we have a public hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll have like a month.
I was thinking we were gonna get them, and then we were gonna vote. Okay, I got it.
Well, and the whole thing is, if this doesn't go within the timeframe, then they have to start all over again, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
I guess, but I, I intend on keeping the progress of the plan going.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just trying to let them know. It has to be scheduled at a certain time.
I don't wanna read them and vote. I wanna read them.
I'll also be sending you some subsequent information that we've been looking at, and was described at the joint meeting, which talks about some of the very concerns that you guys have with this density issue. Our PUD states that the density can't be any higher than it is in the urban residential district. And per property size, and this is one thing I need clarification from Roger on, based on the size of the property, the density is not, doesn't meet that, it doesn't come close to that. Well, it's close, but it's not, doesn't exceed it. So that's one check for density. But the whole other discussion that we've been hearing from MTA is, forget about the word density and think about how close the development is to opportunities such as, you know, recreation or educational opportunities. But yes, the, and we're all aware of what the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room is, and that is, you know, access to the site. Not necessarily access off of Forestville. I actually drove that on Monday. I took a ride back there, and it's, you know, Forestville's been improved over the years. But the intersection obviously is a challenge. But is there a way to balance that out with getting them into a phased approach, which at some point triggers, you know, hey, here's the end of your run until something happens? You know, it, it is about balance, so I just hope you guys consider that. And we will be sending out, whether you've read them or not already, some publications from MTA that speak about density a little bit different than, than, than we've been talking about.
Yeah, my, my, my concern is not density. In fact, I'd like them to build four-story condo units on that property, which would re, which would leave more open space, and would build affordable-size studio, one-bedroom units. That's my issue with the Longyear project, that's my issue with the Renovari, and, you know, I, I don't, I mean...
Yeah, but you, you have to consider whether or not it meets zoning requirements.
I don't think it does. I don't think, I don't think the Longyear project meets the requirements of our zoning ordinance, section thirteen, that applies to PUDs. I don't think it meets the qualifications of the PUD based on the original plan. So the way it sets now, I'm, you know...
Are you leaning on the general health, safety, and welfare?
Yeah, and incorporation in the section thirteen of our master plan and the provisions of our master plan that talk about affordable housing. This is not gonna be affordable housing, and we're fighting, facing, everybody says we're facing a crisis. So, I mean, these people are gonna have a huge development there. There's no reason they can't set aside twenty-five percent of their units to be three hundred and fifty to four hundred square-foot studio, a seven hundred and fifty square-foot one-bedroom, and combine those into multi, multi-story buildings. They can have, like, you know, as a small percentage, but at least they would be satisfying, in my mind. It would be a token satisfaction, but at least a satisfaction of what I read as the requirements of thirteen in of our master plan. So I'm just, that's where I'm coming from. And I am an April fool, I know that.
Well, we have a diverse planning commission, and it's, it's good to have that. I know we have a lot of five-oh votes, but that's not typical in a lot of cases. Sometimes there should be split votes, and, and your opinions do matter. Your interpretation of the master plan, my interpretation of the master plan, our interpretation of the zoning ordinance, all of that comes into play. I will say that with these projects, that I will be utilizing our legal counsel and, and have been to make sure that, you know, I've been here for twelve years this year, and the only two PUDs that we've ever done have been in the last six months, so. Not that they're overly complex, but the PUD process, again, is the bending of the ordinance based on, you know, ingenuity and land use. This, they are not, you know, we talked about this during our joint meeting, and not to belabor the point, because I really had a goal of getting out of here by eight o'clock. But they are providing their own utilities. They are doing a very conservation-oriented subdivision, is what it is. If they have more than fifty percent of the land available for common use, that is, that exceeds what we require in the ordinance for a conservation-type subdivision. I'm not arguing for the development, I'm just telling you, there's another side to that, land use, you know...
Well, I can see them laying aside fifty percent of the property that's not developable anyway because of the slopes, and putting larger-sized lots. And I'm still saying that two hundred and forty parcels out there is too much. It doesn't meet the, the, the nature of the rest of the area out there, and that's the problem I have with that. And my, my opinion is based on the, give me the subjective, the ability to have a subjective opinion on this. It's not, does it meet A, B, or C? Do I feel that it matches the harmony of the environment out there? And I don't think that does. And that, that's the flag I'm gonna plan and stand with.
So one thing I would ask you all to do ahead of this is to take a ride behind Econo Foods to the Harlow Farms Development that has been constructed by Mr. Swably ironically. And look at that, because it's very similar, except for the single-family, large McMansions that are back there.
And not quarter-acre lots?
Uh, they're small lots.
Quarter-acre lots?
They're smaller.
They may be smaller, because it's in the city. I'm not, I'm not positive, but I, I haven't seen... In fact, I think he's got a platina...
What are you talking about, behind Econo Foods? I was talking about out there. That's swaddling development.
Oh, it is, but I'm not talking about...
Okay, we're talking apples and oranges. We're talking, you know, over there.
No, 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 sir. What I'm asking you to drive by on your errands is to look behind Econo and see the variety of housing types that are back there, and the density is very similar to that.
If they're proposed.
It's very similar to what's being proposed.
Yeah.
And they're all occupied.
You're kind of at odds with what Denny's saying then, because he's proposing more density than what? Because you don't want that much density.
I'm not saying proposing more density, he's proposing more realistic prices for people to be able to afford.
Right, but it also makes it denser, though, too.
They could just decrease the, they could just decrease the number of units, and it would satisfy both Steve and I.
There we go.
But of course, the collective wisdom of this group is what I would respect. So whatever the vote comes down, you know, we all respect that. But each of us has an individual opinion.
That's why you're on the planning commission. That's why you're interested in the job, right?
That's exactly for the good of the people of the town.
Health, safety, and welfare, Jim.
And our job is to provide you with the information to make your decision.
You are so, you are such a excellent provider of information. And I'm not blowing up your skirt here, you have done a tremendous job.
I prefer kilts.
Kilts, oh, that's right. Coherent, all right.
Okay, Jim.
Just, just one last question. So if, if there isn't any kind of a road agreement, and this comes to us, can we, if we do pass it, can we say we're limiting it to just the one hundred units, like what they're saying?
Approve, deny, or approve with conditions.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right.
And the last thing we'll say about it is that Eric and I reviewed an article from a downstate community that turned down basically two hundred acres of...
It was much more of a mixed use than this. This is pretty strictly residential, but this particular one, this is an article we can certainly forward along to. It was much more mixed use as far as retail, restaurant, residential.
High density, in a farm field, though, so you can imagine what the surrounding property owners thought about that. Township turned them down, they got taken to task in litigation.
See, that's my question. I mean, what kind of legal legs we have to stand on? A flyer system? No way we're doing it. We got some serious horsepower and some serious legal money. Does the township go, okay?
They displayed that already. Well, no, I...
Well, no, I don't want any, I don't want that. I don't want any threats.
Again, it's, it's about balance, right?
Well, I don't want litigation threatened, if I don't make the right decision in their, or their opinion. That I won't stand for.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
And we have great legal representation ourselves, so I, I, I don't think it's gonna come to that.
Better not.
But just as an example, and not to fear-mother at all, but it, it was an interesting, interesting article nonetheless. So we'll forward that along. But yeah, you know, look forward to getting through the process and moving forward, one way or another.
But, you know, like I said, if they're, if they're threatening litigation, we're nothing under, what we're doing is pointless.
No, they haven't done any of that, Steve.
Well, you said.
No, we're talking about another development thing. We were made aware of it.
I'm just, I'm just deadly serious about that. I mean, if they can threaten, you know, litigation, and we say, okay, fine, we're gonna have it, then this is just a pointless exercise we're going through.
I don't believe it is. I think it's gonna be very constructive.
All right, we'll find out.
Okay, let's move on to reports. Linda Winslow, what's your township board report?
I don't have one. You mount with them. And it was lots of fun.
Road committee.
And we're gonna get applause.
And you're gonna drive them.
Yeah, Jim. Okay, you've got the road committee.
All right, well, if you don't wanna give us one, then we'll move on to the road committee.
Road committee did not meet this month due to lack of agenda items. We will meet on May second. And regarding the kind of maintenance program for this year, we utilized the county's Paser ratings, which is, we... we utilize the county's PESR ratings, which is, we, I understand the township has done those over the past few years before my time here. But this year, we will be utilizing the counties, and then we will be submitting roads that were scored low on that PESR rating, as far as the shape that they're in. We will be submitting a bid in conjunction with the county's overall bid, which should hopefully help with some economies of scale there for maintenance of those. If you would like more information, I can certainly forward along the list of road segments that are proposed to be worked on, maintained. But other than that...
We would like that, and the township board would like that.
Okay.
So, send it along.
Rec committee?
Rec committee will be meeting next week, but I think I reported at our last meeting that we just basically went over the grant application, the final decisions by the board, and the scope items, and the proposed budget.
Planning and zoning?
Nothing more to add.
Do you want to try and schedule a day where we could take a bus tour and kind of check stuff out? Or are you guys too busy right now, or...
Um, no, I mean, but let's let the earth dry out so we can get on some of these other roads, because I know my driveway is six hundred feet long, and I can't even pull my sports car out to drive it around yet, so... It's a problem.
That's terrible.
For you.
That's terrible.
Really?
You see all these hot cars driving around now, and...
You're stuck.
I can't, I can't get out, I should pave it, that's what Carol said.
You want me to come over and plow?
Yeah, right.
Mine's still in storage.
I was actually out there in the slush, throwing slush and dirt into the woods in an effort to try to get the snow down, so we have a lot of snow at our place. But yes, we will schedule something probably in June, if that's okay, or late May.
All right.
Once things dry out, that way we can get on the back roads and do that kind of stuff, too.
Announcements for anyone? Additional comments for anyone?
Yeah, I was wrong about Tech. Wrong about Tech at Penn State.
They got blown out.
They got waxed, as my wife said, the worst beating in NCAA history with the best goalie at Tech. What happened? All weekend long. I heard it.
They had a good regular season, though.
Yeah, they did. Okay, no one else? All right, you can adjourn.
Jason?
Yes.
Does the recreation committee want to hear about the community day event?
Sure.
Of recreation?
Yeah.
I could come and talk a little.
Next Tuesday at five thirty.
I'm going to be in.